In Governor Baker's executive order regarding the COVID-19 state of emergency, we are allowed to conduct business remotely in this fashion. So at this point, I would like to call the Silver Lake Regional School side of the table to order, and I would like to do that by roll call. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Paula? Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann? Ed? Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. And I am a yes as well. Silver Lake Regional School has a quorum. Mike?
I'd like to call the Unit 31 7:00 PM meeting to order. Can I just, instead of the roll call, can we go by town? We'll start with Halifax.
Allison is here. Summer is here.
Thank you. Bob? I think Bob's there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Kingston?
She was here.
Eric, we know he's there. Michael?
I'm here.
He's here. Yes, thank you. Plimpton is myself. John, are you on?
But I'll give you that.
I don't see John. Jason, you're the alternate on that committee.
That's correct. I'll stand in tonight.
We have a quorum for Unit 31. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So on to our agenda. The first item for our agenda tonight is the approval of our regular session minutes from April 23rd. Oh, that's unfortunate. Sorry. Thank you for letting me know. So we had a meeting back on April 23rd, and we have some minutes from that meeting from the regular session. I will entertain a motion to approve from the region side.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented. This is Eric.
Thank you.
This is Laura. I'll second it.
Thank you very much. And a roll call vote, please. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Go ahead, Mike, to the unit.
Can I entertain a motion on the 31 side for the April 23rd minute, please?
Second.
The second?
Second. Summer. Summer seconded.
Okay. Allison? Halifax first? Yes. Robert? Bob?
Bob, please have an issue with his sound right now.
Okay.
But Allison and I are here, so.
Thank you.
We can talk about Halifax.
Eric?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Jason?
I'm a yes, and John has joined us as well.
Hello, John.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So thank you, everybody, for your help clearing that business. So we called tonight's meeting to go over the list of items that our administrators have put together that we could potentially apply for CARES Act funding for. We did have a presentation from the Treasurer of Plymouth County last week. It was extremely informative, and we appreciated his time to come before us and just explain the different phases of the funding that's available and even some of the other places we could potentially look for funding. Some of you may have seen the information that came out from the National Association of School Business Officers and the National Association of School Administrators this week. It outlined the projected cost for opening up our schools in September. The number came out as an average of $490 per student extra just for COVID-19-related costs. I could go through the list, but I'm pretty sure we're all aware of it. I did want to let you know the information that's been reported on the news and in the newspapers recently does not come from DESI's Working Group on Reopening Schools. That is Massachusetts' interpretation of the current CDC guidelines. So it's being widely reported, this is what DESI's Working Group has come out with. And I'm not saying that DESI's Working Group won't reflect a lot of what you're hearing in the media right now, but that is not the official stance yet of how schools are going to be opening up in September. If we choose to do so, I do have a resolution that has been proposed by several different school committees around Massachusetts right now, which is calling for full function, full funding of any COVID-19-related measures. I could read that to you at any point if you so desire to move that motion. But again, it's calling this an unfunded mandate and putting it on the backs of the communities and the individual districts to try and meet these regulations that are meant to keep our children safe but are also going to imperil our ability to function as school systems. So maybe after we hear some of the items from our administration, we can revisit whether or not we want to take up that resolution or not. And even if we don't choose to do it tonight, I can send it to the chairs of all the committees, and we can put it on a future agenda potentially. All right. Without further ado, I'd like to turn this over to our administrators so they can let us know some of the items that we might need to purchase moving into school next year. So Jill, Ryan, the floor is yours.
So we have forwarded to you several items. The first two attachments that I believe everyone received was the summer program guidance that we received from the Department of Education and a list of potential supplies for summer programming. And at the time that we sent it out, we thought it might be insightful in terms of how things might look or what recommendations might come out from the state. Today, the commissioner issued a statement for us not to read into this guidance or to jump to conclusions that this will be the prescription or the measures that will eventually be coming out at the end of the month in June. So with that being said, it was easy to begin to assume that we might be taking certain steps based upon this guidance, but we were asked not to take that leap at this time and that the guidance will be coming out hopefully by the end of June in terms of reentry for the fall. The commissioner did say in our last meeting with him that this guidance will be more prescriptive than it has been in the past. The other two items in your packet for tonight, one was a list of technology, potential costs. And I know that Steve has joined us tonight, and he also is working on a few other items. But as you'll notice on this list, the majority, the focus of this proposal focused on being able to support and to refurbish and replenish Chromebook supplies, given that so much of our remote learning this year was facilitated by the deployment of our Chromebooks. And so Steve has done a nice job of summarizing for us what the cost would be, what his anticipated cost would be. In particular, Halifax had a request for one-to-one, and I believe I saw today communication between Jim and Steve regarding a potential move to one-to-one at the middle school because a number of the Chromebooks that have been used in the past were deployed to support students this year, and there may be greater need at the middle school next year. Again, we don't know what form learning will take next year, whether it will be in person, remote, or a hybrid. But Steve has done a nice job of summarizing what the potential cost would be, and he also has a few other items that he is looking into but did not have actual estimates. But he is on the call today. If you have any questions with regards to that list, I would think we should take that one first since Steve is here with us.
So if anybody has any direct questions for Steve, feel free to chime in on the committee from either the region or the Unit 31 side. If no one has any specific questions right now, Jill, maybe Steve could just summarize some of the items that he's been looking into, putting on our list for the CARES Act. I think we might feel kind of we're outside of understanding the direct impacts on the students and the schools, and it really might help us just to have a little narrative of the items beyond what you just mentioned to us that are driving our list at this point.
Steve, would you be able to give us a little summary?
Sure. I started by the assumption that we would want to provide a Chromebook to every student K to 12. We actually looked at what the kindergarten students were using and found the Chromebooks, despite a little problem learning the login method, we're actually providing very good support for the students on the resources the teachers were assigning. So going on the assumption of moving to a one-to-one K to 12 assignment plus supporting our integrated preschool as well, although we wouldn't be buying new devices for that. I believe you all have the list which summarized the amounts. I could go over it if you like. We're assuming a certain number of Chromebooks coming back will either be damaged or may not come back at all. We do have some insurance that will cover it, and we do have a great tech team that can handle in-house repairs. So my numbers are probably not the full scope of what will need to be replaced, but I'm trying to be conservative and not short changes. Looking at additional costs, I am looking at the possibility of outfitting every classroom with a webcam so that should we end up with a situation where we're half-hybrid and half, you know, half in the class, half out of the class, there'll be a device in there that connects to the teacher's desktop so they can provide the same lesson to all concerned, depending on how we come back. By the way, if anyone has a crystal ball and can tell me exactly how we're coming back, I'll be happy to give you more exact numbers. But I don't think that's happening. So based on that, we'd be looking at somewhere around $15,000 divided amongst the six buildings for web cameras. If we go to a one-to-one going home with students from 6 to 12, which is fairly standard in most districts that do a one-to-one, we'll also be looking at needing to have some more carts to store the Chromebooks in the classroom for the K to 5 that we purchase. Probably around $26,000 worth of actual carts for storing the devices in the building. Although there is some possibility of repurposing some in the buildings. For example, if the grade sixes, all of them, we could take the carts from grade six in the buildings and move them to a lower grade that might not already have them. Again, it's a shell game, so we'll go with that for the moment. There are some other cost factors that we're looking at. Of course, there are companies that come out now with, well, you could put a swivel cam in your classroom, which will automatically follow the voice of who's speaking, so you could have more of a participation from remote. But I think at the moment, we're going to look to just the basics of what we need to get the lesson across. Should this turn into a longer-term thing, we can start looking at some of the fancier options, but for now, I just really want to make sure we have what we need and can cover most of the situations we can imagine. If I can answer any questions on that, please feel free.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions for you, Steve, but thank you for that summary. It gave the flavor, I think, that a lot of us who don't work in education needed to hear just how you're thinking about approaching both a hybrid and a potential remote entry back in next year. So thank you for that. Eric, you had a question?
Yes, I do. So I'm going to put on my Kingston Elementary School Committee hat for this question, and this is going to be directed probably to Jill and Christine more than to Steve. So I see in the list, we have about $120,000, give or take, for KES and KIS for some technology, looks like replacement and age-out. If we purchase those with end-of-year funds from this fiscal year, assuming that we have that available, and then apply for the CARES Act funding, now remember, we have to purchase something or have a purchase order in place in order to apply for the reimbursement through the CARES Act. So if we expend end-of-year funds, but we don't get reimbursed until July, and we get that $120,000 back, is that $120,000, does that belong to KES, KIS, or does that go to the town and we don't see it?
That would go back to the town of Kingston.
Okay.
So again, I'm just thinking back to what we learned about how this money is going to be distributed. So it made sense to me, after I heard the presentation last week, that each of the elementaries would take the information from our administrators tonight, and they would all go through their own town to coordinate with Town Hall as they distribute our care funds. There might be some larger items that are shared within Unit 31 potentially that I was thinking we would apply that with Silver Lake. And again, we were asked to do that through one community, but we'd have to collaborate with all three boards of selectmen just to make sure, again, that we're not taking more of the CARES fund from the pool for that town and also not leaving any of it on the table either. So we're still in a position where we have to balance it and work with our towns very closely. But that was a great question, Eric, and good answer. Christine, pretty quick on the draw there. Thank you for that.
I don't like her answer, though.
No, but.
I respect it as much.
It was a great question, and now you know the solid answer to it as well. Anybody else have any questions for Steve's list in particular?
Well, can I ask a piggyback question on Eric's?
Go ahead, Summer. Absolutely.
Okay. So, great question, and I actually asked a similar question last night at our school committee meeting. So, but if we are going to purchase through Silver Lake and we're talking about collaborative efforts amongst our boards of selectmen, are we going to divvy that back out to the individual towns, much like we divvy up the shared cost budget, or how are we going to do that?
It's going to take a little bit of coordination. They were at our meeting last week. I did invite all the boards of selectmen and finance committees to hear the presentation from Plymouth County and the explanation of how those funds go out. What I am anticipating again is anything that's just for Halifax and Halifax alone will go directly through your board of selectmen.
No, I'm talking about Silver, I'm talking about shared items through Silver Lake. I understand the individual part.
Okay, good. All right. So yes, we're going to have to then probably divvy up based on enrollment from October 1, sort of like assessments to a certain degree, and then go to the three towns and say, well, if we apply for this from Silver Lake, this will be Plimpton's share, Halifax' share, and Kingston's share.
Hey, Jason, can I add to that?
Go ahead.
So in my conversation with Tom O'Brien about a month ago, when we talked about this specifically, he said that they don't want to see it that way. Like, if we were buying Chromebooks, like Halifax do so much, I mean, maybe we have to do that anyways, but what he was suggesting is that we would probably, as a region, have several different orders for different things, and you try to allocate, keep the orders whole so that Kingston would order all of the Chromebooks, and then maybe Halifax would order all of something else. Now, obviously, we would have to coordinate very closely because the deadline is the end of June, right? So if Kingston hasn't used any of those funds and there's $500,000 available, then there's more room to go through Kingston. It does mean that one town might have to front some sort of money but would get it back. I don't know, but that's what Tom had said to me a month ago.
Right. And I understand where Tom's coming from, but I don't know if our different towns are necessarily going to go with that, that way of breaking it down. You know, the breakdown I have from our October 1 enrollment from 2019 would say that we would have to try and find a package that would be close to 30.6 to send to Halifax, a package that's close to 57.1 to send to Kingston, and a package that's close to 12.3 to send to Plimpton. And I understand what he's trying to say there, and if we can get close, working with the boards of selectmen, because as the treasurer did mention, most of the towns have not even come close to approaching the amount that they're allocated. So I can reach out to the boards of selectmen in the three towns and see if they would be willing to come close to that percentage breakdown if we can do our best as a region, but I think that could get very messy, needless to say. But I'm more than willing to try and attempt that. Chris, I see you have a question. Feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I'm curious if we know what the allocation is for the three towns. I think you just, Jason, it's very critical to know if Kingston's got 500,000, and they've already earmarked without conversation with us, 400 to police-fire KES, KIS, we only really have access to 100 without them adjusting their thoughts that they may have started months ago or weeks ago, where I think we're kind of last minute here with the deadline. I'm not sure if we know what those allocations are.
I know what the soft cap is. I just don't know how much each town has already applied for. Like, Kingston, first round is 586,000, Halifax is 345, and Plimpton is like 10 bucks or something, or 130,000. I had to give to Jason that little dig.
No problem. So Kingston, Plimpton, and Halifax have not communicated to me as the chairman of this board if they have spent any of the CARES Act funds yet. I reached out to them when we were starting to approach it, and they did attend the meeting. Saw a lot of heads nodding when I mentioned that we would have to coordinate with them how much we draw from that fund, but I have not gotten any of the direct numbers from any of the three communities so far of how much they've gone for.
Thank you. Yeah, we have some pretty big numbers yet, that's why I'm wondering. You know, Halifax's got $150,000 of their 340 for computers, so that's probably just the start of things with police and fire getting involved.
Right. Absolutely. And again, this is just one of the funds currently that we are exploring. There's other funds that Jill and Ryan are looking into right now, and this is also Phase 1. There'll be several phases of this CARES Act money coming out, so we might not realize all of it in Phase 1, and we might just have to keep reapplying when Phase 2 rolls out as well. This also speaks to the resolution I mentioned earlier, which is basically asking if the state's mandating, the state covers it. It shouldn't be necessarily coming from local receipts from that end.
Christine has a comment, Jason.
Christine, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, somebody just mentioned that this is just the first round of funding for CARES Act for Plymouth County. This is through the end of June, and there'll be another allotment coming July 1 going forward. And my understanding is that would be more capital-related. So I agree that we have to deal with the towns on how is the best way to know that we could be submitting for, we could be submitting for payment and that there'd be a piece with, you know, how much they're allocating to the towns. But I did want to say that with the CARES Act, what the whole goal is, the goal is that when we would submit the invoices, we need an invoice, and Plymouth County could pay the vendor directly. So in the case that you mentioned earlier, Eric, if we find it would go back to the town, but if it was, if we had an invoice in hand and we made the submission dates, they could pay the vendor directly.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a great angle, Christine. Thank you again for that. And you know, the goal of tonight's meeting wasn't necessarily to devote yes or no on the list our administrators come up with. It was so we could be informed, talking to the citizens of our towns, and also to authorize them to move forward with communicating with the three towns. So I think that speaks exactly to what you're talking about, Chris, as well, that they could start coordination once we give them approval to move on to the next step. Anybody else from either one of the committees like to ask a question of Steve before we move on to some other items potentially on our lists? Steve, again, thank you for taking good care of our three towns. You do great work watching the Bottom Dollar but also making sure that we're 21st century schools. And I know that people thought that idea about the camera to do the casting of the class, that was something, again, that a lot of us wouldn't think about. So thanks for adding that flavor to why you put things on the list. Really appreciate it. So Jill?
Just a quick question. Steve, with those cameras, if we, not forbid, had to transition back to full remote learning at some point next year, would those cameras work with the Chromebook? Are they just based, are they just a desktop?
The cameras could certainly work with the Chromebooks. They are going to take more of the processing power from the Chromebooks, though. We're actually looking into some hardware that's made specifically for Google Meet, where the processing is done more in the camera than on the Chromebook itself. We found that many teachers are actually using their home computers, so a good webcam might actually help with that.
Yeah.
My hope is that most of what we're looking at would not sit unused in the building if we had to transition back to remote.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome. And as far as purchase orders, I could certainly have purchase orders and orders placed before June 30th, depending on how we can work with the purchasing regulations. And I'll defer to Christine on this because many of the purchases would be over $50,000, which I think would also mean we might need to go out to bid. But we can work on that, and whatever the committee decides and wants us to pursue, we will make happen.
Sounds good, Steve. I had one other question for you that has to do with E-Rate. I know that one of the first pieces of legislation that made its way through Washington DC was addressing E-Rate because they knew a lot of students were going to be learning remotely using the Internet and using remote devices. Have we been impacted by any of those changes, if you know, to the E-Rate regulation changes?
I've been kind of following the E-Rate home process and have not seen anything that impacts us yet. To be fair, the last month, my focus hasn't been entirely on that.
Nope. Understood.
But the E-Rate at home is certainly making way through. I don't think anything has changed yet for us. But we have been approved for all of the E-Rate funds we applied for for the next fiscal year.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much for that, Steve. I really appreciate it again. Jill, I'm going to send it back to you. I know a couple other of your administrative team put together some list for us, so go ahead.
Jason?
Sorry. Mike, go ahead.
Sorry. Sheila Vaughn had a question. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, so sorry. I just wanted to know, Steve, will we need more servers going into this if we were to have the webcams and to have, you know, this more remote learning? Could we get the servers now as part of this CARES Act as well? Because it would be part of that, you know, needing for the remote learning type of situation? I'm just thinking ahead of like, could we get more servers now in preparing for that as well? Is that something that we could put in purchase order for?
Actually, it's a very good question. We should not need more servers to support the remote learning. Over the past several years, we've been really beefing up the infrastructure. One of the things, to speak to Silver Lake specifically in the capital plan, is a new, well, not new, a redundant cluster that will allow us to continue to support the remote learning for Silver Lake students that use the Adobe Photoshop or their CAD systems on their Chromebooks at home. We have one, and that can support a large number of students, and we've been leveraging it quite well this time. What we were looking at and had applied in the capital plan actually several years ago was to add a second one that would act as a redundant system. Should one fail, we could immediately switch over, but in the meantime, we could also be leveraging it to add that capacity for more students. However, at the elementary schools and out of the Silver Lake region specifically, we're actually in really good shape because we've been doing the work over the past few years to really beef up the infrastructure, make it all one system, and leverage the cost savings from making everything one.
Steve, you're amazing. Thank you so much. I, you know, we couldn't ask for a better, a better person on this to hear that. That's wonderful, you know, but just wanted to be sure of that. So thank you so much for all your hard work and know that that's not something we need to worry about. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm starting to turn a little red, so I should. we're actually in really good shape because we've been doing the work over the past few years to really beef up the infrastructure, make it all one system and leverage the cost savings from making everything one.
Steve, you're amazing. Thank you so much. I, you know, we couldn't ask for a better, a better person on this to hear that. That's wonderful that, you know, but just wanted to be sure of that. So thank you so much for all your hard work and know that that's not something we need to worry about. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'm starting to turn a little red, so I should probably sign off now unless there are a little more.
Jill, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So in addition, we also spoke with Marie Grable, who is, with, who is here with us tonight. Because we did have concerns, we wanted to make sure that if there were any adaptive technology needs or anything like of that nature, that we would also include that. At this time, we're, we're in a good, a pretty good place with that. But Marie is here in case there are any questions that are specific to that. In terms of personal protective equipment or safety supplies and materials for the fall, what we asked our nurses to do is to come up with a recommended list. And they started this list prior to the guidance that came out from the state. But we wanted them to start thinking about the types of things that they would need, not only for their office, but for the school. And so the items that have been specifically requested for the nurses are highlighted in blue because they then shared that document with their building principals. And their building principals not only worked with their nurse, but also worked with their custodial and maintenance staff to think about additional items that they would need. And so the, the shared document is broken out by school. And it is the, it is the result of the nurses and principals working together and also working with their custodial and maintenance staff as well to try to figure out what they are likely to need in the fall. And we don't pretend to know that this is everything we will need or that certain things couldn't change. So for example, we were asked not to make assumptions based upon the summer guidance. The summer guidance did take a step back from the thermal scanner for schools of 1,000 or more. And in that guidance, they're not recommending that, recognizing that not everyone with the virus actually is symptomatic. We, we know that this is the guidance for the summer. I don't know if that could change for the fall. So you may notice that it remains there kind of as an asterisk item on at least one of our lists because of the number of students we have in that building. But we would imagine that still that the nurses would probably need more thermometers than they have in the past. And there are certain safety equipment and gear that they are going to need. There's also safety equipment that we need for, for example, special education testing. So not, non-permanent plexiglass kind of shields for testing that can take place between an educator and a student so that there's a guard between them for that kind of in-person testing that will need to take place. Those are some of the items I, they, some of our principals are here tonight to try to answer any questions you may have. I did not see any of our nurses here tonight, but we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have. I did notice some disparity between some of the schools. And so I did ask that question as to why one school might have more or less than a particular item. The reality is, is that some schools had some supplies already purchased. For example, or some schools had particular needs because of a certain population or a particular need for that building. So the principals are best poised to answer those types of very specific questions.
So I, I have a question based on some of the PPE and protective equipment. I know the guidance isn't finalized, but we have some general ideas and I've also, so I've also been brought up to speed on how difficult it is to order some of these supplies at this point. That much like the states in the beginning of this crisis were bidding against each other for, for equipment and PPE. It's now turning out to be a lot of districts are in the same position, trying to bid for the same materials against each other. Have we heard anything about the state's attempts to try and have a clearinghouse of PPE, hand sanitizer and other medical related accommodations for us that we can purchase directly through them or a vendor, kind of like from the state bid list?
So in our last call with the Commissioner, he mentioned that something would be going out to the business directors because they were trying to look into something like that. I'm not sure if anything has been mentioned in any of your groups, Christine.
They are saying to please use the services they have, but they're not saying anything about having the capacity to have those items filled quickly. But they are suggesting that you do use their operational services division, which would do, the state's bidding is what it does.
Doing the state's bidding just sounded funny to me. I'm sorry.
Previously admitted.
Understood, understood. So any questions about the materials for medical, for nurses, for the buildings? Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one, one question on the hand sanitizer, which is probably going to be hard to get. So I was wondering, have we reached out to any of the, the local distilleries? Because I know that they were making quite a bit. I'm not sure if they, if they're still in that process, but they were actually donating those supplies to, you know, different groups that might need it, you know? So I didn't know if that was anything anybody had, had thought of. If, if we can't get the regular Perrell sanitizers, the, the, the ones that come from the distillery is, it's a lot thinner. So you, you would need to put it into maybe some kind of a portable spray bottle, you know? We, it, it works fine. You, you just can't, if you open the bottle, you're going to dump it out because it's really, really thin. But it works. I just throwing that out there, just as a option.
That's certainly something we can bring back to the team and see if we can find any companies that are willing to help us out.
Just might have to ask them to put on kid-friendly labels appropriate for our 8 to 12 population. But I'm not a bad idea. I do know they ramped up a lot of distilleries down in Plymouth and we're handing them out to lots of organizations, including some of our police and fire departments in our three towns. So it's, it's a good angle, Mike. Chris, the floor is yours.
So thanks. This list is for, I looked at it and looked at it more as classroom needs. My question is sort of building cleaning. If I saw one fogger on there in the middle school, is that something we should also sort of encourage down the road in terms of this list maybe, or is it a secondary list? That, okay, if we're going to go weekly, nightly deep clean, whatever it might be, I think weekly maybe, you fog every room or you use those UV sanitizing machines. Would that qualify in this list is my question. Those are bigger expense items.
My understanding is, is that if the, if the building needed a fogging device, it would have placed it on this list. In fact, some of our schools have those materials. But I think the, the principals would be better able to answer as to why they did or did not include it on their list. And Michaela and Jim are here tonight. I think Carrie is here tonight. I know Halifax has been using a fogger. I believe the high school has been using a fogger.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if it's something you'd want or if they're going to, you know, do a weekly third-party service, like ServePro came in to the high school that spill, or we'd contract that out. So you know what? As long as we're having kids in the classrooms, we need them coming in on a weekend basis. And it'd be a service versus overwhelming our custodial staff with the size of our building.
So some of the, the costs of fogging for those outside agencies are, are pretty cost prohibitive. I can remember when this first happened, we reached out for estimates to have all of our buildings done. And it was quite expensive for buildings of, of our size. So at that time, many of our schools invested in the foggers and the, and the chemicals so that they, their, their staff could, could have those on hand to, to clean the buildings for the limited, even just with the limited use that we have.
Any other questions from either one of the committees about the protective equipment and cleaning supplies for the school? And I don't see any on my screen. If you do have one, you can write into the comment and I will call your name otherwise. Mike, do you have any questions about any more of the PPE or the cleaning supplies?
I do not, no.
All right. I'm seeing no further questions from the committee either. So I think that, that part of the list you've covered well. Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So those are all the items so far that we have put together for the CARES Act reimbursement.
Those are the items that we considered as being potential as reimbursable under the CARES Act.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work and your team's work to put together this information for us. So we can know how you're approaching this CARES Act funding to try and offset some of the costs. And that would allow us to redirect our funds where they're, they're needed most, and that's teaching our students. So thank you very much for that, Jill. Seeing no further questions on this item of the agenda, I'd like to move us on to an update on the remote learning and what some of our plans are for over the summer to get ourselves situated and ready for whatever September may bring. So Jill and Ryan, back over to you again. Thank you.
Sure. For this one, Ryan may want to jump in because he is certainly playing a, a critical role in, in these, these next steps and, and has been throughout the process. So Ryan recently sent out surveys to parents, to our staff and to our secondary principals to send to students for feedback on the remote learning experience and to help inform our next steps. We have been told by the Commissioner that we can expect more prescriptive guidance than we have received in the past for the fall. Now, based upon his most recent statement, I, I, I don't honestly know what to expect. I think there was a lot of speculation. And we continue to mentally prepare for both in-person, remote and hybrid. And some of the potential difficulties that we will have to encounter as we attempt to plan for all, all options or even just a continuation of some form of remote in terms of trying to improve upon what we were able to do with spring and what we would like to do better in the fall. And so we're going to take that survey data, we're going to take the guidance and we're going to work with our administrative team and then begin creating work groups to help troubleshoot and begin planning for the fall.
So I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Summer just wanted to know when we should expect this additional guidance from DESI on the remote learning for next year?
We're hoping, we've been told a couple of weeks, so we're hoping by the end of June. But typically what happens is, is that the Department of Education will not come out in front of the governor. So until something is, has generally in line with the governor's expectation in terms of the phases of reopening and reentry, you won't, you won't see a plan from DESI until it has been approved and aligned in that way.
Okay, thank you very much. Summer, would you like to follow that up or ask another question at this point?
Yeah, it might be if Ryan's doing the surveys. I've had a few, several parents approach me about the survey. Because I kind of reached out to parents and, you know, that I know of. And I was like, go take the survey, please, so we can, you know, because we want input from our community, right? I think a follow-up survey needs to go out regarding the potential of what it might look like for our students in the fall. Regarding, you know, classroom size, masks, no masks, homeschool options, are you sending your children if they're required to wear a mask? Are you not, you know, because I've heard a lot of parents have very, very passionate positions on this. There is a growing homeschool, I don't, I mean, community, I guess I can say. And a push for it, people are advocating it. I mentioned last night in our meeting that there's mailers coming out promoting online education for our children. I know that we sent out a survey regarding the distance learning and remote learning, which I think is obviously very important as well. But I think we also need to send out a survey about how parents feel about what the climate's going to be if our kids are going to go back to school.
Yeah, it's a good, um, thank you, Summer. It's a good, it's a good question. And we talked about that internally and we debated the question about asking parents about the bus, like will your student ride the bus? And then we just thought that putting a general question for now to say, what are your concerns? And then evaluate the concerns. And we were definitely, I've seen a lot of, we're having some good, good feedback on the surveys. Lots of people are taking it, which is great. And we'll also, we'll evaluate the totality of what parents are thinking about, what students are thinking about, what staff are thinking about. And then when the guidance comes out and we get some clarity around how many students, you know, per classroom, will it be week on, week off? Then we can go with the specific questions for families. And so it is our plan to, to process the state guidance, work with our working groups and then reach out to parents again and families and staff and say, here's our plan. And then based on that, you know, do you intend to use the bus? Will you be providing your own transportation, things like that? So I think it's a good recommendation and we just would like a little more clarity before we ask, because even asking a question like that.
Fired up for nothing, maybe.
May, right. And I think I, maybe. And so as you can see, things in the state are, you know, every three weeks the phase changes and I think people change. And I, I think the Commissioner and his guidance to, to districts even today was saying a little bit seems to be still to be determined. So I think, so we're just going to wait until we get the guidance, then we will on your recommendation. And I think it's just good practice to ask again when we have some more certainty.
Yeah, so I, I, I agree with that. Actually, I don't think there's any rush in that regard. We do have some time there. You know, I think parents are probably going to respond pretty quickly to something like that. But so you keep using the word guidance. And so my question is, and follow-up question now that we're talking, do you suspect that this guidance is going to be just guidance and advice? Or do you suspect it's going to be mandated?
That's a tough one.
And that also depends if we're talking about how we re-enter schools versus how we conduct remote learning. I, I am hearing that how we re-enter schools is going to be about 80 to 90% regulation with a little bit of wiggle room for locals of how they address the last 10 to 20%.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm getting at. Not so much remote, getting at more.
So those are the numbers I'm hearing. A lot of what the Commissioner is trying to put together for how we reopen schools is going to go through the Mass State Legislature for approval in either the form of Mass General Law or Regulations.
So do you suspect that it's going to be a blanket policy for the entire state? Because something, you know, Boston City schools are going to be very different than our little town in Halifax or Plimpton. I mean.
Right, right. So as you know, there's many different voices at the table and one of the voices at the table is MASC and we're advocating for as much local control as possible with support and the guidance from the state.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Jason.
Absolutely. Sorry, Ryan. Back to you with our remote learning plan. No, great point, Summer, with asking about those re-entry questions as well. I think that's a great idea and I would love to see the results of that as well. Ryan, I totally understand why you want to hold off on that at this point until we have some further ideas of what it's actually going to look like. Go ahead, Ryan, if you want to bring it back to the remote learning.
The only thing I would, thank you. The, the only thing I would add in addition to what Jill said is we're just, we're trying to collect just feedback on the platforms and approaches that worked or were less effective. And we matched the questions for students with the questions for parents and, and for staff. And we're interested to see, you know, what each of the stakeholders feels like was effective for, for remote learning. So that's just one additional piece about the surveys. And then also, as we talked about, I think at the Silver Lake meeting, trying to promote best practices, our staff survey asked about some original internal Silver Lake examples of quality remote learning and then trying to push out those best practices, not just as examples of remote learning, but perhaps just quality instruction. And so that's another piece that it's the goal to be able to share with teachers, you know, by the end of next week and work on some resources for them. So if we go back and we're hybrid, that we're stronger than we were on March 13th when we started with remote learning. So that's just a little bit more about what we hope to do with the survey and opportunities staff have to share as well as. and opportunities staff have to share, as well as students and parents.
Ryan, Chris Eklund just asked, have all the surveys already gone out yet?
They have all been opened. They are all actively open. The staff survey went out first, that closes first. And then the family survey and the student survey close at the end of this week. So they're all actively open, none are closed yet. And I believe the parent survey closes tomorrow night at, sorry, Thursday night at 9:00 PM, but I may have to check, but they're all open.
Great, thank you very much. There any additional questions for Ryan?
I think I saw that Laura had one.
Okay, Laura, if you have a question for Ryan, go ahead, please.
Sure, I just, Ryan, it sounded like the survey, well, I, you know, I saw the survey, and I know that the kids got the survey, and it seemed like there was a lot of questions about sort of the tools and approaches that different people took and what was helpful, what was not helpful. I guess I'm wondering about sort of the overall structure of how remote learning was implemented. You know, at least at the high school, I think the approach was sort of, you know, work released on Monday for the remainder of the week, you know, which I know in my house was challenging just because that's a whole new level of sort of independent learning, which was sort of something brand new to the kids. And I think that they'll get to that point, but I'm wondering if there's been discussion about sort of, you know, best practices beyond sort of what are the tools and the activities, but the actual structure of sort of how, you know, how expectations work, you know, that I was talking to somebody yesterday, and we were talking about how, you know, when you start the school year, you know, teachers set the expectations for their classrooms. And I think with remote learning coming in so fast and furious, there wasn't a lot of time to do that. So I'm just wondering sort of what kinds of things might we think about for next year in terms of making sure that the structure is something that the kids are ready for?
It's a good question. And we're trying to collect that through the open-ended questions. I know it's not as clean as the other questions that you can use specific checkboxes with. But we, one of the things we fully recognize internally is that teachers had until March 12th to develop relationships with students and practices and routines this year. And it was still challenging to do remote learning. So I really think we need to think about in an environment where we're a hybrid or perhaps remote learning, how are we going to make sure that we dedicate time to establishing relationships and routines? So Jill and I participated in a little bit of a, like a large-scale think tank today. And it was from different leaders in a couple of adjoining states, but people were really, were brainstorming ideas about if you don't have until March to create in-person relationships, how do you create those in September? And that's definitely something that we're thinking about how to do if it turns out we start hybrid or remote. So I think the long answer, Laura, is yes. We'd like to use a little bit of the qualitative data. But secondly, if we go back remote or hybrid, we fully acknowledge that we're going to have to spend time with relationship building and routines and supporting staff as they do that with their students.
We also had established some information sessions, Q and A with staff to go over the expectations of each phase of the rollout. And so, the ideal here would be to establish these expectations prior to September, possibly having some contingency plans and making sure that we spend some time with staff prior to the start of school to answer any questions and to be explicit as possible with regards to expectations for whatever that fallout, rollout may hold. And by having the working groups and by having voices present, we're more likely to anticipate some of the concerns and some of the needs that may still exist. But the, one of the things that we we continue to look at is the need to move beyond assignment and focus on good, effective instructional strategies. So whether we're in person or online, effective instruction is effective instruction. The tools can be different, but making sure that we help support our educators in that. It was quite a challenging turnaround, and it was remarkable, the flexibility and the the support that the community has shown during this difficult time for staff, parents, and students coming together and trying to make the best of a very difficult situation and to persevere despite the obstacles. So we feel very grateful for that, but we also recognize that we need to be prepared for whatever the fall may hold.
Thank you, Jill. There's a few questions in the queue for you, Ryan. Chris, you have the floor next, go ahead.
Thanks. Jill kind of got on my question there, and that's, if we're going to take these surveys and get feedback that pushes us to build, bring in new tools for the fall for the online learning, be it like Steve was saying, you know, online remote learning with a classroom component to it with the cameras, or a new web tool to help push science further, when, how would we get that implemented and get the teachers up and running comfortable with that? Because that was, I think it's part of what being suddenly thrown into this remote learning in March. Before April vacation, it was very, you know, on the ground, trying to figure it out as you go. And I think after April vacation, people had a chance to take a deep breath and more come together and collaborate to put a better system in place from April forward. So that's kind of one of the concerns I have is teachers, you know, going on vacation in a few weeks when school's out, they come back a few days before they start. If we know we're going remote day one, how and when are we going to get these tools and structures to teachers in advance?
So we have some tools and structures, I don't even, I'm sorry, I don't know if my mic's on, I apologize. We have some tools and structures in place. We have been working with some of our teams to consider what, if any, additional items we may need. And the technology team is always looking at new possibilities for us. In light of our budget constraints, we were apprehensive about pushing forward on any particular platform, not knowing necessarily that that will be the best mode of instruction. So one thing that we have talked about, and Ryan is working with our coordinators and our principals as well and soliciting input from teachers, are some of these examples of best practices that were shown throughout the year and creating a website with supportive resources, but also exemplars and an opportunity for kind of a one-stop shop that should we need to transition quickly to remote at any time, it would be a resource for us. But even beyond that, because again, we want to make sure that whatever we're creating is not just good remote learning, but good teaching practices in general. So kind of holds up against the test of time regardless of what scenario we find ourselves in. The technology being the tool, but effective teaching practices being the science and the art that we really need to continue to focus on regardless of what fancy or flashy tools we might be able to help to support us in our efforts. Because we can't, we also can't undersell the importance of the relationship between the student and the teacher that some of these programs just can't provide. We have some wonderful programs. We have some wonderful online materials that students can use, but they don't replace the relationship between student and teacher and the impact that effective teaching has on our students. And that's one of the limitations of online learning is kind of making remote seem less distant so that our students feel connected and engaged. And that can be more difficult to do on this platform, but that's what we're working on, and we work together to try to improve upon because it has not been easy. It has been a challenge. And so, we capitalize on the expertise of our staff. We capitalize on the shared experience. We capitalize on the input from our students who know what worked and what didn't, and from our parents who can tell us what worked and what didn't. And that may be different from child to child and home to home. So none of us have the exact same experience, but we can look at some of the trends and some of the data and try to troubleshoot in advance. But I would, I would say that typically when we move towards certain platforms or tools, it typically comes from departments who have investigated a particular technology tool that has worked well for them, and then they share it with others. And then, you know, we also want to make sure that it's COPA, FERPA, and SIPA compliant, whatever that tool is, and it holds up to our school policies and protections for students. So there's any number of reasons why a school may look at certain tools, but then say, "This isn't the best for us right now." I can tell you, one of the things that we had started to talk about was the need for communication, especially at the elementary level, and how we can facilitate that, especially with some of our younger learners. So we were beginning to talk about how Google has certain chat features that may help enable and help us to communicate. Now, there's also very, there's more robust systems such as Schoology, but that's a more expensive platform for us to invest in. And it has some wonderful features that extend beyond what Google Meet can do. But we also want to make sure that we're using, whatever we decide to use for technology, it meets our needs, not... I think today in one of our discussions is we wanted to make sure that we were looking at technology that was going to solve a problem and making sure that we understood what that problem was before we advocated for the purchase of any particular tool or platform.
Thank you, yeah. And I think that leads to my point of, you know, trying to get the teachers in front of the kids more and finding, you know, that app that can help them with voice testing or something of that sort, so they can have it correct. And focus and give them more free hands to kind of do a five-person group chat or a five-person lesson. I know my younger daughter in KIS sixth grade, she would get in, you know, help groups, three kids, five kids, her friends. And they were great. They'd want to, they'd book a 20-minute slot, and they'd want to keep the teacher for 30 minutes. So it was wonderful to see that she's still connected with some of her teachers. But again, I think Ryan has a great point, more so at the younger age, not having a connection and knowing your teacher before you get in there. KES to KIS, where you don't know any of the faces. Yeah, could make it a challenge to start things off in terms of, "Who's my teacher? What's the tempo? What's the pace? What's the expectation? What's the teacher's demeanor and reaction to things?", so.
Thank you very much, Chris. Leslie Ann, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jason, I appreciate it. And Jill, and Ryan, and Michaela, and Jim, and all the staff, I can't thank you guys enough for continuing to pivot over this period of time. I feel like it's sort of like, it's a bit like having a baby. You get used to one stage, and then things change, and you got to figure out what to do with them when they start crawling. And then you get used to the crawling stage, and you got to figure out what to do when they start walking, right? I mean, it's a, and I feel like that's sort of an analogy for where we've been over the last several months. And if anything, this has definitely shown the resilience of our Silver Lake community for the vast majority of staff to pivot this many times. And it's not, it's not, you know, endemic to Silver Lake, you know, I mean, it's certainly happening in every school district, but you guys have just been wonderful, really trying to figure out what the new normal looks like. And just when you sort of get used to the new normal, it changes. And to be frank, I'm not so sure that DESI has really helped us along the way in some instances into our new normal. Though I would argue that it was, it's great to have standards and power standards and understand how they apply and things of that nature. And I've said this before, you know, I want to make sure that at least, you know, a good percentage of our efforts are not waiting for DESI because we seem to do that a lot. With that being said, I mean, I've been pretty frank, I think, with Jill and Michaela that, you know, it's been a bit frustrating, you know, what we've gone through over the past several months in terms of what our education looks like right now, our delivery service. And I want to make sure that we're able to mature beyond that. And I specifically speak from the grade seven through 12 perspective. I understand that K through six is a very different approach, and I agree completely with Chris and others that you need to have a relationship with your teacher. I mean, who doesn't remember their relationship with their kindergarten teacher, you know? It's just such an important, such an important relationship. I do worry about the sixth graders becoming seventh graders. If I recall, you know, that transition from your small elementary school into this big, you know, big, exciting Laker community, and you come together with your towns is, can be very intimidating, but it can also be a very exciting time. And I want to make sure that our sixth graders get that benefit of, you know, understanding what it really was like to become a Laker and meet new kids from other towns and form new relationships and things of that nature. And I don't know exactly how we do that. But one of my biggest concerns frankly is we need to move beyond kids being assigned work with no instruction. It's sort of the vast majority of what's happening in our district right now, at least from the seven through 12 level, is that kids are assigned work on Monday. And if they have issues or questions, they can join a Google Meet, but they're really not getting any direct instruction. And that certainly varies a lot, you know, with the different subject matters, and it's impacted in the different subject matters differently. You know, it's one thing for a child to get a PE assignment, you know, to go do some exercise routines. It's another thing to have a kid try to figure out how to do a chemistry lab in their house, you know? And they have different impacts on their life. If we do go to a hybrid learning environment in the fall with kids in school one week and not in school another, I'm kind of curious as to how we're going to have direct instruction on the weeks that the kids are at home. Because the teachers are going to be busy with the kids who are in school. And I know you probably don't have an answer for that right now, but I'd say I've been very frustrated that our focus has been on asynchronous learning, and there really have been little to no consistent attempts at synchronous learning in the seven through 12 level. So I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I obviously, I share a concern there should be both synchronous and asynchronous learning taking place. We went over these expectations. We worked very carefully to define instruction versus assignment. And I think one of the best ways to address the issue is if you, that was your experience to to contact the teacher directly, and then if that was not met with satisfactory results, then to speak with an administrator. So again, I can't, I can't speak to every classroom, but I can say that our remote learning plan, which was approved and endorsed by our teachers' unions, speaks specifically to instruction. It also speaks to both asynchronous and synchronous learning opportunities. And it was, in fact, the expectation. So I, I think one of the things that we will continue to to need to discuss will be this definition of instruction, and that it's not an assignment and that it must be multimodal, and that's effective practice. So it shouldn't just be written, it should also be stated. It shouldn't just be stated, it could be animated, there should be pictures, there should be opportunities for students to interact with materials. The reality is, is that that's just good instruction, whether it be remotely or in person. And so, to deliver only in one mode is not effective instruction. And the best way to work with that is for us to to support teachers and to help teachers in terms of what effective strategies would be and should be, and to provide observational feedback with regard to their remote learning practices, should we continue in the fall. But also being proactive in terms of responding to their needs or to their reflections in terms of what they felt worked well and what didn't work well, and trying to provide learning opportunities and supports for them as well, whether it be in the summer or ongoing in the fall and throughout. Just as we would if we were struggling with a particular aspect in person. Just as we would if we were struggling with a particular aspect in-person learning. We, you know, I think the focus here was on completely revolutionizing the way that we taught and doing so under extreme circumstances. And I think that people worked very hard to try to do their very best under the circumstances. And we will benefit from the experience, learn from it. And, you know, of course continually work to improve our strategies and our, our efforts on behalf of our students. I don't, I don't think anyone here is complacent or satisfied or, or wouldn't love to, to do even better on behalf of our students. I think that's an, an ongoing challenge for us.
Thank you, Jill. Leslie Ann, do you have a follow-up?
I just have a quick follow-up. I'm just trying, and I know you don't have the answers for this either. I apologize. I'm asking you questions that are kind of crystal ball in some respects. But I'm wondering if we are envisioning a fall or could envision a fall where if we did go to hybrid learning and there were on and off weeks or A weeks and B weeks or, I don't know, what, what we'll call them, that the weeks that the students may not be in the building if there was more structure to the day. So for instance, you know, if they're not in the building and they still have, now they're going to an asynchronous week style more heavily than a, than a in-person week. You know, are there more expectations for when they're supposed to be sort of in class, so to speak? Because right now there really are no expectations for, for students to be in class virtually at any, any time during the day. So I'm just wondering if we're going to go to a really structured day one week and then a completely unstructured week the next week? I would like to maybe that revert back to where we are, which is not my hope.
Yeah, I hope not, Leslie Ann. I, I hope.
I thought that was really poor grammar, but I'm sure one of the English teachers will correct me.
Yeah, I hope the second week is, we can demonstrate we've learned a lot from remote learning and, and it's a supplemental opportunity for kids to continue to learn. And that's, as soon as the guidance comes out, I think that that's going to be our focus is if it's an A, B. What is A? Like, I think we do A pretty well. We'll have to do it different, but I think that's a strength in terms of engaging with students, you know, in a building, it'll be different. But then when the B week comes, that's going to be our, if, if that's what it is, that's going to be our challenge to solve. And, you know, I, I hear, you know, I definitely hear the piece about structure. And I think what I hear from it too is that our asynchronous needs to, can be stronger too. Like, how do you package learning experiences for kids so that they're really learning skills with teacher-created content? And I think that that's a place that's challenging for all educators and we can get better at that. We can get better at that as a district. Like, I think there's things that we can share with staff that could be packaged that way, that we need to be able to produce. I think teachers would acknowledge that themselves. And I, I think if we have a week that's like that, we need to make sure that students are still going to be learning and engaged that second week. So if, you're right, we don't have the answer yet, but that's definitely a focus that Jill and I are tuned into, to make sure that, you know, the learning continues if, if it's a B week, that would, learning would continue if those students are not assigned to be in school.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Sheila, you had a question. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, you know, I honestly, I think what Ryan's saying is, is important. But, you know, I hear that, that I think that there were some teachers who really brought on that were great in that, in that remote learning environment in some arc, but we also were thrown into this remote learning environment from somewhere from nothing. So I always tell, you know, I always say like, you know, we've never been through this before. We're not an online school. We're not, you know, so we've really done, you know, our due diligence, I think, in where we've come from, from March. You know, there's obviously a lot to go, but, you know, when somebody goes from, you know, working 30 years in a, you know, in an in-person school and then you're asking them to then go throw themselves into a computer, I myself don't know if I could sit in front of a computer all day. I do know that both of my children who was in fourth and ones in seventh have had two very different experiences in how they've gone through their, their, their time here as remote learning. I have one that, you know, might be going on to an IEP and the other one had been thriving and doing amazingly well. So I think for us, you know, I'm worried about the social emotional piece as well. I didn't know if they could speak to some of that social emotional piece that we might be able to bring in if we're doing that hybrid slash, you know, what, what are we doing to, you know, help some of that if we could do that with our students? I know that we have, you know, the students haven't been kind of forced to use some of that. But, you know, I feel like maybe for, for the fall, we might, you know, have some of those students that are having those, those challenges, kind of being forced to kind of use some of those social emotional processes and going to see the psychologist. And I think maybe, you know, helping them to, you know, see the adjustment counselors. I don't know if that's something that, that is going to be part of the plan as well because I'm kind of worried about the social emotional health of our kids along with, you know, the, the learning environment. But also, you know, going into the fall again with that piece, I'm not sure if we're adding that additional piece to, to the learning environment.
We believe that there will be three main components, and this could obviously change based upon feedback and based upon circumstances. But as we talked about it as an administrative team, we talked about the social emotional needs of our students, the academic needs of our students. And then we looked at it from a safety or facilities types need. So those are the three main areas that we want to really focus on and try to make sure that we have examined all of the aspects of, of those needs so that we're well-prepared for the fall. So it, it's, it is not lost on us. We are grateful that so many of our students and, and families have taken advantage of our counseling opportunities that have, have been available. We, we appreciate the honesty with which many of our parents have approached us and have tried to solve problems as this unfolded before all of us with our children at home or on our laps or on our computer while we're trying to work, whatever the case may be. It, it was a huge transition for many families. And, and then there's an, there's also the sense of the social loss for especially some of our, our students and some of our more vulnerable students in, in terms of that social connectedness. And so some of the things that emerged were some, some groups that were led by teachers that were not academic, but that were, that helped to keep students connected with activities that were more social in nature. And one of the things that we can also try to do in addition to, you know, the, the actual counseling pieces or the social emotional support from the experts, there's also that key piece that, you know, a lot of our teachers have really stepped up to, to try to help kids stay socially connected through some of their groups and some of their activities that certainly we would want to continue some of those successful practices, whether it be a Minecraft group or a book reading club or a physical fitness log and check-in with their favorite phys ed teacher. There are a lot of connected activities that, that helped some of our students as well. And we're, and we're grateful for that. So we're going to want to try to duplicate some of those things in the fall, should we need to continue on this path.
And I want to give a shout out to Mr. Avery, Minecraft group, right here. You know, he has been outstanding and he really has made the process for my, for, for my fourth grader absolutely wonderful to, to keep that going. So a little shout out to him, but thank you for, thank you. That's, that's good to hear. I just, you know, that's something that I think we're all kind of worried about as we go, go into it. But thank you, Jill. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I've got kids on my lap the entire time.
So you understand what we're talking about?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Sheila. Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Jason. I just wanted to echo some of the same thoughts that everybody else has had. And I also really wanted to thank all the teachers through the entire district, the administration, especially the families as well. Because we still, they're still, they're still working and they're trying to juggle all these things, especially the teachers that have kids, young kids, myself included. And I hear all the things that are going on. I've also heard with the social part that a lot of the teachers have done a snack time. They have done a virtual zoo tour, which is pretty interesting. So I, I guess, I have two questions. One was that I don't know, I don't know if you know this. I don't want to put you on the spot. But how, how is, do we have a number on the student involvement? Do we, do we, where is everybody at? Do we, do we have students that haven't checked in as much as we would like and kind of reached out a little bit further to see what's happening with any of those, those families? Just to.
Yes. Unfortunately, I would, I would say, based upon the feedback that we have received, I would say that there are some examples of that in, in almost every school, every, every level. But our team was not deterred and pursued and pursued to, to make contact, to offer assistance, to lend support, to modify expectations if, if need be to, to figure out what was the most essential to try to help those particular students in need. So yes, there, there are instances where, where students were, were not engaged or unable to engage for various reasons. They, I would not say that they were the majority of students. I, I would say it was a, a minority of students. And typically what happened was, Mike, is as soon as a principal called home, generally speaking, suddenly engagement picked up. So, and in other cases, it was just a matter of, you know, helping support families. We had cases where parents were calling our counselors saying, I don't feel like a very good parent. I, I can't do it all. I can't work and make sure they get their work done. And so sometimes it was to just be a sounding board to parents who were struggling, just as human being to human being, and acknowledging the difficulties that, that people are experiencing and figuring out what we can do to make it more manageable. That kind of flexibility has been key for some of our families. And I, I think necessary because we, we're all in very different places. And it's, it has not been easy for some, quite honestly. So, yeah, there, we do have some families that, that struggled and some students who, who invariably struggled. But we continue to, to pursue and persevere and, and try to keep them connected as best we could.
Great. And just to follow up, Orion, did you, did you have something?
I was just gonna, I mean, I would just say too, in addition to what Jill said, Michaela Gill and Jim Dupio have really strong processes with the student support team. And different groups, tracking, engagement, teachers report informations to assistant principals. I don't know if you, if you have more questions about that. They, both schools I know from the, from Silver Lake schools have pretty involved, and the elementaries as well, data teams and support teams that answer that very question and are making sure that there's groups of people staying in touch with students. So I just wanted to add that point that I'm sure they could talk a little bit more about that if you have more questions about it.
Sure. Thank you. And as we continue to move forward with this, this new process and, and, you know, everybody's, everybody's doing it. I can't believe it, unbelievable job. And we just jumped into this thing and, and it's great. So where are we at with, with the, the feedback from the teachers? That we, are we, are we doing a teacher survey as well with the parents? So we can, so we can continue to move forward, making, making sure that they, that they have everything that they need to be able to get through these times as well, you know?
Yes, they do. There's a, the teacher survey went out last Friday. That closes tomorrow, I believe. So their input, they are providing input to. And I think it is, we need to check in with, with them as well and relationships. How to do that, but, you know, if teachers are going to take care of students, teachers need support. And they've had a very challenging year and they've risen to the occasion. So we, I agree that we just, we need to make sure that we're checking in with them. And we surveyed them first and we'll continue to make sure that any needs that they identify, we'll do our best to try to, to meet.
Great. Thank you.
I know an answer to you, Mike. You know, Ryan brought up what Michaela and Jim have been doing at the high school, but Carrie from Kingston said she could speak a little bit to how the elementary schools are addressing, reaching out to those students they haven't heard from. Carrie, if you'd like to speak, please feel free.
Sorry, I have to hide it with our three little kids.
A lot of us are in that situation. We totally get it. Thank you.
So just to add some Kingston, Mike and I, Mike Danbury and I work really closely together. We have, I feel really fortunate to have a really close-knit group in Kingston with our response teams, which includes the principal, AP, school psychologist, behaviorist, and psychologist. And so we have a really simple platform as far as checking with our teachers every single week. Anyone they haven't heard from, we check with related service providers. And if they have them, whether it's our side, special ed, CPT, then the administrative or responsive team reach out to them. There have been situations where we haven't touched with them and that means we're picking up the phone. There's been situations where we send photocopies of packets on a weekly basis. And I have to say, I feel really good about the fact that most recently we had a family in the shelter who actually finally emailed us the fact last week and said, where do we drop off all the worksheets? And we were like, oh my God, a win. That's like a huge. And it was a kindergarten kid. So I think that's really cute. That's like amazing, you know? And so we have done a really, I feel like Kingston's done a really nice job in trying to be really proactive and inclusive, making sure we include all students. And as far as Chromebooks, we're really fortunate in Silver Lake to be able to hand all those out and connect with kids. We have FaceTimed with kids on, for our students who don't speak English, we're FaceTiming with the little, the little kids, second graders, getting them into clubs and making sure that they're involved because maybe their parents don't speak English, but we can get them in clever based on FaceTime. And that may not be approved, but we got them in and they're learning and they're doing it. We're trying to do what's best for kids and families. And I think Mike and I know what that's like, having three kids of our own, whether older or little, we know what it's like. So we're happy to answer any questions in general for Kingston.
Yeah, Carrie, thank you for just adding that flavor. And when we hear from our principals and assistant principals of what it's like on the ground with the students, it really adds a lot of clarity to what we're, what we're thinking about. So I appreciate you jumping in there. There is a question from the committee, and, and this is kind of a broad question. And it's just, what are some of the biggest hurdles you're hearing from parents right now? And Jill, you kind of alluded to it already, hearing from some parents who just feel overwhelmed that they can't do everything between balancing their, their home, their job and, and teaching their kids. But if there's anything, if there's anything you can speak to now that you're hearing quite a bit? And maybe if you want to add a positive or two that you're hearing as well, just to keep things balanced? Go ahead.
I, I think at the end of the day, I'm a parent and I wear a hat. I'm a special ed teacher. I'm an educator. And I still send the busy emails to my kids' teachers, worried and concerned because I'm a parent, right? And so at the end of the day, I think, hold on, hold on, Harrison. I think at the end of the day, the fact is we're all in this together and we just need to continue to communicate and support each other. So, I mean, I have families reaching out concerned about sending their kid to kindergarten because of the reality of what is it going to look like? And the fact is, I'm in the same exact boat. I have a four-year-old who's an August boy baby. And I'm like, oh my God, do I send them? Right? And I never guessed it until COVID-19. So I think the constant communication and just being really supportive of our families is the most important thing and validating their feelings because it's valid. And we all feel really worried and concerned. And I think that they just need to know that as the Silver Lake community, we are going to step up and. to step up and, and approach our students when they come into our schools in the fall, whatever that looks like, whether it's remote, whether in-person. And I think it's about building that trust with them. I think a lot of it is also gonna be about, we have new kids coming in. I have to, I have to mention that we have a lot of Sacred Heart kids looking to come into our schools in Kingston specifically. And so I've reached out to a lot of them and saying, "Hey, like, let's do a, let's do a FaceTime tour. Let's do this. Let's, let's figure out a way to make the kids comfortable." Because it's really an unknown and for the families who are working or not working or struggling at home, we're all in the same boat. So, sorry, I don't have any questions. I was holding a four-year-old behind the door at the same time. I apologize if I got off path there.
No, no. Thank you very much again for just adding that to, to the conversation. We appreciate it. Michael, you had a question? The floor is yours.
Thanks, Jason. Um, I want to echo everybody else's thanks to Jill, to Ryan, to all the educators, all the other administrators, um, who've worked so hard to put this together. I see this both as a committee member and also as a teacher in a neighboring community, um, how hard this is and I really do not envy you guys the task of juggling, uh, all of this and all that you normally have to juggle. What I'm about to say, I really don't mean at all as a comment on how things run to date, but more as a suggestion about how, hope that we will think about next year. I think we all kind of assume that there's gonna have to be a lot of adjustments to whatever's going on. I think it's unfortunately pretty unlikely that we're gonna get much in the way of consistency at any point next year and there's gonna be change no matter where we start. With that in mind, I'd really like to encourage all of those who are involved in the planning to aim not for the moon, but to a reasonably high level so that when the adjustments come, they're in the form of adjustments down to what proves to be more realistic rather than attempting to add things as we go. I think it has proven very difficult for me personally in the classroom. I think it's kind of generally true, um, of change more broadly, that it's much easier to, uh, remove things that turn out to be extra or overly burdensome to get to that happy medium. And I think we would get more accurate feedback because I just, again, think kind of generally, it's much easier for people to perceive when things are more than they can handle than to kind of see the negative of the things that they could handle but don't have. So again, I really hope that as we get more guidance eventually and as we move forward, we're doing so with that mindset of putting ourselves to, again, not the absolute maximum, but a reasonably high target from which the assumption is that there's greater likelihood we would be adjusting down than trying to adjust up.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike, we're gonna try and get it out of the park.
There you go.
That's always our goal. We're aiming for the fences.
Yeah, and you know, I, I would love to end on that, but I have to ask the question if there's any more comments. I really think, Michael, you, you hit that one right on that, then the head of the nail. Uh, I appreciate your comment and I echo it as well. Someone who has the perspective of both being the parent and the classroom teacher, I, I hear where you're coming from on that, so thank you very much. Is there anyone else from either one of the committees, Union 31 or Silver Lake Regional School who'd like to ask a question? Uh, go ahead, Ms. Coleman.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thank you very much. Um, I'm just wondering if we can plan to meet, um, as a joint committee more frequently than we usually do, typically do between now and the start of the school year, just to make sure that we're all hearing all the latest information, whether it's from D E or the governor or plans for remote learning. I know that people are asking me every day and I'm just trying to, I'm trying to stay out of that entirely right now with what, um, D E regulations are coming out with, just knowing that things can change kind of overnight right now. So I'm just wondering if, um, perhaps as a joint committee and then, um, as, like, Kingston will meet again in July, I don't know right now if we're going to plan a meeting for August, but just to have more frequent communication so that we're all on the same page to what we're sharing with the community.
Yeah, that's definitely, um, something that Mike and I can do from, uh, our end and I, I think it will be very unlikely that we skip any months, um, this summer when it comes to meetings, especially with the ever-changing of coming out for both how we re-enter, if we re-enter, and what our distance learning will look like. So I think that is absolutely something that's on the radar of all of us right now. So thank you for mentioning that as well. Any further questions or comments from anybody on the committee? Jill, Ryan, anybody from the administrative team? Anything else for us this evening?
That is all we have for you tonight.
Yeah, I, I think you definitely, uh, you definitely rose to the occasion. Thank you so much for getting that list of information together for us in such short order with everything else that you're trying to do every single day. Again, if I could give you flex time for all of the extra work you've put in, since this started three months ago, I don't think we would see you guys for a year. So thank you for all of your efforts. We really appreciate it. Uh, I will entertain- You're welcome, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I entertain a motion to adjourn from the region.
Eric moves it.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second? Thank you, Chris, for the second. Uh, in a roll call, Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. Laura?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Ann?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. And just before the region signs off, I want to let, we do have an additional meeting this Thursday at seven o'clock and we're gonna be looking at the FY21 budget. So anybody who'd like to attend that meeting, you're welcome to join. Uh, the link for that meeting is on the agenda. Uh, so just wanted to make mention of that. Mike, the floor is yours.
Motion.
Real life, real life.
Who was the second?
Michael.
Bye, thank you, sir. Okay, Halifax, Summer, Allison?
Yes, yes.
Bob?
Bob left.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Kingston, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. Sheila?
Um, yes.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes.
You, Clifton, John?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Jason?
Yes, Mike, thank you.
I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone.
All right, everyone, have a good night. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.